And the person that takes over during the weekend in our elementary buildings, Glenys Foglia, and I just want to say that Glenys also works with the vision screening program. She's done this, she's worked with our practical, with our licensed nurse practitioner, Tiara Owens, who is in charge of all the nurses in the district, and she's working with Ms. Owens. So why don't you come on up to the mic, Glenys, and give us all the wonderful figures of the previous year?
I'm going to inundate you with some figures, but they're so, they're so great. It was in the fall of 2011, with the blessings of the Middletown School District, that we started the No Kid Hungry Backpack Program. One school, Maple Hill, ten backpacks. This past June, we finished our sixth year. Three elementary schools, sixty-six backpacks each week, twenty-two to the three schools. Two thousand one hundred and six backpacks were filled. We provided fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two meals and ten thousand five hundred and thirty snacks. And this was possible, really, not just the Lions Club, but we had people in the community are so generous, and foods, the food that donated was amazing. We had food drives, the Middletown High School, the track team had a food drive, the PTO had food drives, and the honor societies in the school district had food drives, and the churches were doing that. This year, seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two individual food items were donated, and that included over eight hundred pieces of fresh fruit, which is not non-perishable, but it's, the fruit is something that these little children just love having. So when the backpacks, should they not go out on Friday, the social workers knew that there was fresh fruit, and they would remove that fresh fruit, so nothing per, everything was, was non-perishable that we sent them. Then in February of 2016, we were able to join with Orange Cares. Our Orange County Executive, Steve Newhouse, launched this program with the Food Bank of the Hudson Valley, so we were able to get some of their food. We had monetary donations, again, from the, from, from families here in our community. We were a recipient of a gift from the Orange, what is it called, the Classic Ten K Road Race, and four grants were successfully written, so we were able to, what normally would cost six to ten dollars per backpack, this past year, some of them were only twenty-five cents a backpack because of these donations and working with Orange Cares. Now, the coming school year, we're going to increase the number that we give to each of the three elementary schools. And I invite any of you that are free on a Thursday morning to come and see what we do. Mr. Perino has joined us a number of times. It's, it's, it's really amazing. And the community is amazing, and I'm so proud to be part of the community, and I'm proud to be working with the school, the schools officials that work with us. I thank you for letting me personally share this information with you, and I really think we're making a difference in the lives of these children, because nobody should be hungry. Now, Mr. Perino gave me this note, and I told him I could not read it, but he said he asked me to read this. Whatever Mr. Perino asks, I will do. Just wanted to show my support for a fantastic program. You are truly amazing. At the bottom of this pad, it says, "No one does more for veterans." I say, "No one does more for the children of the Middletown School District than Glenys Foglia." John Perino.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, and I'm positive that the whole board and the whole district feels the same way, Glenys.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And thank you for what you do with the No Kid Hungry Program, and thank you for what you're doing with the vision screening program. Another very, very special recognition this evening. We have with us one of our graduating seniors, Raymond Madden, who obtained the designation of Eagle Scout, which is a very, very difficult designation to achieve. And Jennifer Madden, coincidentally, works in the food service, so she does a good job there. She takes care of me whenever I go over there for things, so that's good. And we have, we have another Madden here this evening, Jennifer?
Yeah, Christian Madden.
Christian Madden, and he has his uniform on, too. Now, Ray, I'd like you to go to the mic and just tell the board and the audience and the community how you, what you've done to achieve this, and as you're walking to the mic, you're not the only Eagle Scout in the room, and everybody's looking around, "Who was that?" And, no, are you an Eagle Scout? John?
I'm not an Eagle Scout.
Okay. So it's Tom Scott sitting back there, and Tom Scott has three generations of Eagle Scouts in his family, so that's quite the thing. Congratulations on that. And Ray, you're the newest Eagle Scout, so go ahead and, and explain just a little bit of what you've done.
Go on.
Go ahead.
I'm just nervous.
That's okay.
In addition to getting many merit badges that are required for Eagle Scout, in addition to some side ones, as you can see by my sash here, I have a lot of merit badges, I had to do an Eagle Scout project. My Eagle Scout project was at the DNH Kno Campsite in Cutterbackville, where I built three wood bins to hold firewood, and I even built a walkway.
And how long did that take you, Ray, to do?
I got my project approved in November of last year. And from there, it just took me all the way until the end of the school year. We're trying to get, we're trying to get donations and trying to get everything together, just, it was long.
Well, you anticipated, anticipated my question. No, no organization actually, the, you had to raise your own money, correct?
I had to go around to businesses and organizations and ask for donations. Some people said they already met their quota, some people said they don't give donations, but overall, a lot of people were very generous with the donations I got.
Well, that, well, that's really a, a great thing that you've achieved, and I think your brother's on the same track, is he? Okay. And who else do you have with you this evening, Ray?
Well, whoever...
Your mom, yeah?
I have my mom, my brother, and that's my scout master, Mr. Fedino.
Okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Jim Fedino, the scout master, Troop 169. We meet in Middletown at St. Paul's United Methodist Church. I've been a scout master since 2009. My son became an Eagle Scout in 2012, and I'm still a scout master, and I expect to be the scout master when that little guy down there makes Eagle, because I just love the program and I love doing it for the boys. I'm doing it for them. I was never a scout growing up. I don't have all of the ribbons that the other generals and Boy Scout leaders wear. I don't do it for that. I do it for them. I do it for him. That's, that's the whole important thing about it for me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., we got a photo? Mr. Perino?
Vinnie would like you to take a photo.
Vinnie, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I met Raymond last year at one of the high school breakfasts, and he immediately impressed me. He was sitting at a table with a couple of the young men, and I sat down with him and had a conversation with him, and he's so goal-oriented, you know, that he said, "Well, I'm going to do this," and one of the things he said he was going to be an Eagle Scout, and there he is. Most of the presidents in the 21st century, 20th century, rather, excuse me, were Eagle Scouts. All the original Mercury Seven astronauts were Eagle Scouts. Today is the 48th anniversary of the moon landing, Apollo 11. Both Buzz Aldrin and Neil Armstrong were Eagle Scouts. So you're in superintendents of buildings and grounds. I mean, so you're in really, really good company. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to get a photo of you, so... You know, Kevin, could we get the whole, start getting the whole board in the photos? Is that possible?
No, I'm okay.
Whoever wants to come up and take a photo, it's fine.
Lou?
Nice job.
Why not in the middle right here? You've got the lighting better.
In the middle.
I can take the picture if you want.
This is revenge.
This one's for mom, so we got one. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perino?
Go ahead, John.
John, it's fine, just you.
That's good.
You're the boss.
Lou's not only a member of the board, but he is a very good friend and neighbor, and Lou is a retired NYPD, and he still works in the capacity in security. I'll just put it that way. Lou, did you want to say anything?
I wasn't expecting this. I mean, John, John mentioned this before, but I told him he didn't have to do that, because, you know, this happened at the last meeting. But I do appreciate this, John, for having my family here. Also, as I said the last time, I appreciated all the votes. I still do, not did, but I still appreciate all the votes that I received, to be back on this board, and I will hope to continue doing the job that I've done the last three years, to the best of my abilities. And thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Would you like to get a, would you like to get a photo?
Yes, you want a small photo?
Sure.
Of their homes? You want one of their homes?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's start with, let's go around, Mrs. Ux, do you have anything to report?
No, I don't. Not at this time.
And I, I know that you have been doing the IEP, so you've been doing a good job with those, putting in extra time and so on, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Um, one moment. I just want to pull up. Okay.
That's good.
I just wanted to, to just announce one thing that's coming up this weekend. The Greater Middletown Interfaith Council is holding God's Executive Order Rally on Saturday for community awareness, to bring awareness to, our clergy will, the community's clergy will be there, but we're, it's an awareness of our community as a multicultural community, and also support of immigrants in our community. And it'll be five o'clock on Saturday, the 22nd of July, so it should, it should be really interesting. Where? I'll tell you exactly where it is. I just have to make the picture bigger so I can see it. I'm sorry, hold on one second. It's just not coming up. Okay. Okay, that doesn't help me, because I'm not multilingual. No, 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 it's, yes, hold on. Okay. Fifty East Main Street, Middletown. So... At the Iglesia Pentecostal...
It's an old Presbyterian church.
A1 Iglesia Pentecostal Ebenezer. Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, yes.
Right? Did I say that right? Okay.
It's the Old Hoard Presbyterian Church. I'm a member of the current congregation, we're, that's hosting it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. Mr. Crescendo? Okay. Let's, let's start with, then the other end, Mr. Gomez, and put the timer on for four minutes, if you would, please. No, you have four minutes.
I have five minutes to find my picture. You get four.
I promise not to filibuster, okay? I just want to, this, every year, teachers through our district and throughout different school districts across the country have the opportunity to nominate students to participate in leadership academies that are often hosted at colleges. My eldest, Abigail, had the opportunity to be selected by her junior high school science teacher, Mr. Knopf, and to participate in the National Youth Leadership Forum, which she attended this past week at Emory University. It gave me a chance to spend two days at a resort in Florida, to pick her up, but I think the beauty of that, it opens doors for young people at the earliest age possible to see what it's like to go away, to explore the wonderful world of arts, liberal arts and sciences that college may hold, and prepare them for future public, a leadership through future service. And I think, as a member of the board, we appreciate, I think, when our educators open those doors for our students, and I think it's nice that more opportunities like that are available for the future. Thank you. Okay. I'm disciplining myself to at least two and a half minutes. That is all.
Nothing is fine, Mr. Perino.
Yeah, I just have one announcement regarding the Midi Music Camp. Tomorrow is the final day for the Midi Music Camp. They're having their concert at 10:00 a.m. here at this, at school, the Presidential Park. It was originally scheduled for the courtyard, but because of the humid conditions expected tomorrow, they're moving it to the gym. So if you're coming, there's no chairs, you don't need to bring any chairs, it's indoor, and we hope to have a great time with the kids. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Pierre. And I know your children attended the... Yes. The music camp. Christian and Zachary. You mentioned that they had a, an excellent experience there. Yes, they did. Actually, Zachary doesn't want it to end. He wants it to continue. I have to find something for him to do now, now. He really enjoys it. Mrs. Knapp?
I had a meeting today with Mrs. Don Levy?
Dunleavy.
Dunleavy and Ms. Burr regarding the plans for next September, working with the concession stand and the football and the track. And I was very impressed. They seem to have accelerated the process for us to have better choices for the kids, more things, so that they can have snacks after school before a sports event. They started, you know, the two weeks before they go back to school, their sports, everybody starts football, volleyball. They're going to feed the students before and after the sport events, and it, it seems it's really moving forward, and I have to say, to me, that's a very important thing in this district. They will now get breakfast, they will get lunch, they will, if they play sports, they will get fed, I mean, I'm not saying they're getting a three-course meal, but they will get fed something before, and then they can get something after. And then we have our backpack program. So I really am enthusiastic and impressed over what, hopefully, what this will show for the parents in Middletown, that we're really trying to educate them, feed them, have them learn, and a combination of a little bit of everything. So I was, that really isn't anything I should be saying right now, but I just decided to say it.
You know, just in line with that, Mrs. Knapp, I happen to attend a planning meeting with the, as a matter of fact, in this building, with the administrators, Dr. Eastwood and the director and the assistant director, Mrs. Dunleavy and Ms. Burr.
Can you talk a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry. Lean forward.
And I was impressed also by the very precise planning with the administrators at the various buildings. They're doing this in all the buildings in the district. They're off to good starts, a lot of synergy between the two.
Well, and we've, we've had some extra, you know, we're trying to plan ours a little different. I'm not quite sure how cheese is going to sell at the football game, you know, the string cheese? But they're going to have it offered for, if somebody wants a better choice, and also that will sell in the spring with track. That would be a protein that the track members would probably utilize before they run. So, I mean, it really, I, I came out with a very good feeling from it, and I really think it'll help a lot of our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Bishop Williams?
Real brief, I think, I think what Mrs. Knapp was just talking about as relates to the, to the food and food service, I think it's a, it's a great direction. They look like, they look and seem to be a great team and willing to try some new things that's going to offer, so very optimistic about what the future is in that area. Just to piggyback real quick, not very briefly, just to piggyback real quick on Mr. Pierre's comments about the, about the Midi Camp. It's been very successful over the last two weeks. Nothing but stellar reports coming back from all of the students and from parents that have their kids involved, and as one of those parents, only one of my children went to camp this year, my, my middle son, Aaron, and he is having an absolute time. I actually wish I could leave him past one o'clock, so, so I can get some work done. But, but nevertheless, I have to pick him up anyhow. But I do, I, I, I think that is a great program that's been offered to, offered to the young people in our district, and in speaking to parents in other districts, they wish that their kids could be involved in a program like that during the summer. So we're doing well, and we're off to a great start for the summer. Looking forward to, even though we're, we're about midsummer now, looking forward to a fantastic year, and, and we're off running, running good. So kudos to everybody, kudos to our staff and administration, especially those that are working over the course of this summer in preparing for our new year. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Bishop Williams. First opportunity to address the board. If you would like to address the board, please sign in at the podium. In order to honor everyone's time, we ask you to keep the, keep your comments to four minutes. We don't engage in dialogue with, at this point. We're here to listen. If the administration is able to answer any questions, they will do so, otherwise, someone will get back to you at the next meeting, who present information at the next meeting. Any takers on addressing the board? First opportunity. Going once, twice, go on. Feel like I'm at the, at an auction. Next, the superintendent's report. I think we have a professional development plan.
Yeah, Rich Delmore is going to present the professional development plan for the next school year. So as you can see, we're, a lot of people sometimes think that during the summers, everybody goes into slow-mo, but we're actually very busy in preparing for next year and actually the next couple of years as we plan ahead throughout the district. So our next year's professional development plan, Mr. Delmore?
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood, members of the Board of Education. Annually, we come before the board for your approval and acceptance of our, the district's collaborative professional development plan that is required on the commissioner's regulation annually to be presented by the board. However, that's the culminating activity to this exhaustive, comprehensive annual review of professional development opportunities within the school district. As you see from the packets that you receive, it is a very eclectic committee that is, participates on the review. They take in consideration what has taken place, and more importantly, what is needs for the school district in the ensuing school year, as well as a longer-range plan down the road. But annually, it's required by the commissioner's regulation to have that active participation by all active members. There's members of the Middletown Teachers Association, different various committee members that support those initiatives in the school district that are going on and being implemented annually. What's important to note is that what is really new this year is the combination of what you see on the top of the back page, a list of all of the professional development providers outside the district that the district contracts with. You see the acronym C T L E, which is the Continuing Teacher and Leader Education Program that is required of relatively recent certificate holders to have 100 hours within a five-year period of professional development with approved vendors. These vendors have to submit their program to state education department independently, and then get an approval, a certificate, if you will, to be a C T L E provider, so that the teachers and administrators or anyone is required under the commissioner's regulation to accrue hours up to 100. We, as a district, has been an approved provider as well. So you'll see the teacher center listed, you'll see the district there as a provider. So when we have in-service inside our building, those hours count for the teachers. When a teacher participates in a teacher center activity, those hours will count to the 100 hours. As you can see, and the multitude of vendors there are supporting the different initiatives, such as our educational elements of vendors, for our blended learning, for our flipped environments, our technology implementation, our teachers on special assignment for instructional technology. All of these hours will count for teachers. Now, teachers can attend professional development for their own contractual salary advancements or certificates that might not be under C T L E. That doesn't preclude them for seeking that if they need that. But we are required to list those particular vendors that teachers would be aware of, that when they take courses or in-service or participate, that these hours would be attributed to those 100 hours. But if you take a quick look at the document itself, it's talking mostly about the initiatives in our school district, whether it's instructional, behavioral, et cetera, that we're putting forth as our constant review of our instructional program, so that it's not stale. That is why it's an annual review with an eclectic view of different lenses, from teachers, administrators... Regulation to accrue hours up to 100. We, as a district, has been an approved provider as well. So you'll see the teacher center listed, you'll see the district there as a provider. So when we have in-service inside our building, those hours count for the teachers. When a teacher participates in a teacher center activity, those hours will count to the 100 hours. As you can see, and the multitude of vendors there are supporting the different initiatives, such as our educational elements of vendors, for our blended learning, for our flipped environments, our technology implementation, our teachers on special assignment for instructional technology. All of these hours will count for teachers. Now, teachers can attend professional development for their own contractual salary advancements or certificates that might not be under C T L E. That doesn't preclude them for seeking that if they need that. But we are required to list those particular vendors that teachers would be aware of, that when they take courses or in-service or participate, that these hours would be attributed to those 100 hours. But if you take a quick look at the document itself, it's talking mostly about the initiatives in our school district, whether it's instructional, behavioral, et cetera, that we're putting forth as our constant review of our instructional program, so that it's not stale. That is why it's an annual review with an eclectic view of different lenses, from teachers, administrators, providers within our school district. As you can see, as you look through it very quickly, it talks about goals and targets. And this is a very important part of the document. Each year, we've been approved by the State Education Department, and I do not see that not happening this year. I'm open for any questions regarding this very important document.
Why don't we go around, and we'll start with Mr. Gomez.
What are the overall objectives that you see that could be accomplished within the next coming school year?
Well, as we move forward into our overarching, what I consider initiative of personalized learning, as you can see, many of the issues included here, but beyond this document as well, our big push is for reaching every child, regardless of where they are, and moving them in a substantial growth measure to proficiency. That's our goal. And of course, the ultimate culminating goal is to reach a higher graduation rate. As you know, last year, we had, in our fifth, if I say, four-and-a-half-year program, we had up to 87% of that cohort graduating. On August 18th of this year, on Friday, we have the class of 2017 cohort graduating, and we would expect another group to be included. So all of our efforts are always to the terminating grade, but it doesn't happen or start at that high school level. It starts in our kindergarten program, whether it's our two-year kindergarten program, providing teachers with the tools and necessary information to be successful. In all of our programs, in our advanced classes, in our mastery classes, or on-target classes, whether it's our transitional class, special education, our E and L population we're targeting, everyone is included, so that we can honestly say we are providing what teachers need to be successful, and they respond in a very positive way to this.
And I could just say that, from my own knowledge of the teacher center in the Middletown District, I think it's one of the outstanding gems we have in our district for our teachers. And anything that will use that tool to advance the preparation is something that I definitely look forward to.
Thank you. It's ongoing. Professional development is ongoing. This past week, we just had a multitude of different groups in our literacy, in our math, writing the scope and sequences that are aligned to the changes that are occurring. We received, in the first two weeks of June, a field memo from the State Education Department indicating that in the school term 2122, the change of the state examinations will be there. And we are required to prepare the teachers for those changes. And we will no longer call those standards Common Core anymore. It'll be identified as the next-generation standard. So you're the first Board of Education to know the new name of the standards. That has been, I think, the last week in June by the Regents of New York State adopted. So it's called, will be called Next Generation. Now, there'll be absolutely no changes to the standards up until that point. The state assessments will still be aligned to the Common Core standards. But the PD Plan next year, you will see our preparation for, as we are required to do, prepare henceforth four years in advance, the teachers incrementally to prepare for the next-generation standards that will replace the name Common Core.
Yeah, just one final question.
Sure.
And I'll yield to my colleagues. And how, and how will this preparation particularly assist teachers who work with children with special needs?
It'll be all teachers. There'll be special needs, it'd be students that are in our mastery programs, in our, all of our programs. There will be no instructional position left out of that preparation.
Hey, Mrs. DeBaisers.
In the document, under, trying to find it real quickly, training, the word "pre" was highlighted in yellow. So are the pre-kindergarten faculty new to the program then, as far as?
Excellent, excellent question. It is required that the vendors that provide those services for our students come to our facilities and prepare and receive the information. They meet with Ms. Bowler to get all of the information and preparation, and we are required to provide and offer them the opportunity to come to these professional development sessions.
That is new this year, though?
No, that is not new.
Because when I saw the, the pre-
It's just a highlight, it's just a highlight. No, that is not a new regulation.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. DeBaisers? Mr. Pierre is chomping at the bit there. Go ahead.
I just want to make a quick comment. Having been on the Teacher Center Policy Board for the past few years, I know that they do offer several excellent programs for teachers free of charge.
That's correct.
So I don't know how much of our staff is actually taking advantage of this, but they should, they really should, and it'd be great.
A considerable number of staff do take that, not only for those teachers that are looking for a specific area to enhance their expertise, but also to grow in a different area, at different interests. So a considerable number of teachers do take advantage of the Teacher Center courses, even outside the articulations we have with universities, Long Island University and New York State. Instructional Technology University has courses for graduate credit bearing. In addition to all that, as you're referring, they're soup to nuts in all of our reinforcement and supporting what's going on in those classrooms and specifically. Most of those courses, but not all of them, are given by our staff, and others are given by the NICID affiliation, provides, providers of teachers to do those type of courses and in-service opportunities.
Right. Thank you. Mrs. Knapp?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Mrs. Zucks?
I'm good.
Okay. Mrs. Blumenau?
Just a comment. Our ongoing, our, our ongoing efforts to stay up to date, and we're constantly evolving. And I remember many years ago, when I first started getting involved, I remember just first hearing the words Common Core as the introduction, and we're going to be getting ready. And it took us time and hour, and all of our programs, whether it's our mentor program or our teaching assistants, or the classroom teachers or the administration, getting everybody on board. It's a tremendous undertaking when state ed says, "Here, this is what we're doing now." So I just wanted to commend our team for the effort and the work that they do to bring it all together into a digestible, palatable, I'll say palatable first and then digestible form, so that we can stay current with what the next trend is for our kids.
As you, as you make those comments that are right on target, Mrs. Blumenau, the interesting point that the State Education Department, as we all know, read the newspapers, received some criticism regarding the implementation of Common Core. So they wanted to make some revisions, and then they asked the field, structures throughout the state of New York, if they wanted to participate in those revisions. Middletown School District championed that opportunity.
I remember that.
And if you recall, we had about six or seven other districts join us here at this school in the, in the professional development room downstairs with the recommendations that came out considerably in the final draft added to the Regents. So we've been part of what will be part of the next generation, if you will, it's not to be redundant. But you're right, there is a cyclical approach to this. Dr. Eastwood has mentioned a considerable amount of times when there's a new commissioner, the new comes in, the old goes out. But there's been so much discussion about Common Core, and we all know that the intentions were well-intended to accomplish a more rigorous type of opportunities for kids, so they're more competitive, whether they enter the military, whether they enter the job force, or more importantly, continue their education, regardless if it's technical, formal, what have you. So that the next-generation standards were inclusive of many of our recommendations, our recommendations of teachers in this particular district, as well as a consortium of other districts in the Hudson Valley. And we were applauded for that by the State Education Department for taking an active role in that. So I look forward to working every year in terms of developing the professional development plan as the guide to get us to that end where we want to improve education in terms of students all getting, hopefully, over 90% is our goal, our next increment, and then it'll be higher than that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crescendo?
It's all been said. Can I go first next time?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. You won't.
Thank you. Bishop Williams?
It's all been said.
Yeah. You know, as I, Rich, as I read over the documents, I couldn't help thinking how forward-looking this district is. You don't plan for today only, you plan down the road, and the standards, what's it going to be in 2021, and so on. So I want to compliment you and the superintendent and members of your team for this. And speaking of which, Ms. Bowler is here this evening. Are you presenting this evening? Okay, you're here for support.
But she's, she's here with two beautiful little girls.
Yes.
Who happen to be her daughters.
I was going to mention that. Go ahead.
And, well, I don't know if Liz, you want to come up and just introduce them, but one of the things I want to do is I want to recognize Liz, reminding people that she's the one that led the countywide team that actually took a look at the standards and the recommendations and made very significant recommendations to the State Education Department that I believe took notice of those and actually incorporated them into the documents that we see from the state now. In addition to that, Liz Bowler, who is our Director of Literacy, is finishing up the revision of our literacy handbook, which everyone knows is a pretty substantial document about our literacy program in this district, and will be available, by the way, at the annual conference for the New York State School Boards Association. We'll be handing them out, make them available at the booth at that time.
That's okay. It wakes everybody up. And, you know, I wanted to compliment Liz on expanding the sites of our pre-K program. You worked, you worked very hard.
That's correct.
Doing that, so.
Want to say a few words, Liz?
Why don't you introduce those two beautiful children?
My name is Danae.
Hey, there you go.
My name is Olivia.
And thank you, sir. And thank you what you do for the district, Liz.
Or they're going to break to their brothers if they get to speak.
Any, any other questions, Mr. Delmore? Oh, thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I just, you know, I missed something, which is not unusual for me. Any letters this evening? Okay, no letters. We've done the superintendent's report. All right, now on to the action items. Approval of Financial Memorandum Number Three, which we had all the documentation for this.
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp, second?
Second.
Second. Bishop Williams? Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. The Special Service Motion to Approve Special Service Memorandum Number Two is presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp? Did I hear Mr. Crescendo? Mr. Crescendo? Any discussion on this? And as I said, Mrs. Zucks is doing some of the IEPs, so it's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Approval of Letter of Agreement with Crystal Run Healthcare. Motion to approve the letter?
So moved.
Second.
Bishop Williams, Mrs. Knapp? Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Change orders. Approval of change orders. Motion to approve the change orders as presented. And we did have a change order meeting. I'm a member of the committee, and Mrs. Blumenau is also a member of the committee, and Mrs. Knapp's a member of the committee. Motion to pro-
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp? And Mrs. Blumenau? Any discussion on these? Which we had. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we come to the soil testing. Motion to approve the soil testing as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Any questions? All those in favor?
Do we want to maybe have Mr. Scott just explain what we're doing? Please.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Yep, good.
This was a proposal, actually, there were, we took three proposals. This is the most complete and the least, lowest price. This will be for geotechnical testing down at the William Carter site. And what they'll do is soil borings, so they can determine the soil types and the characteristics. So when we build the new road and the work that's anticipated for next summer, this is the immediate information we need to do to the design of that work. So they'll be out there, I'm going to authorize them tomorrow morning after you approve this, and they'll be out there with a drilling rig, drilling holes in the ground to determine that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Tom. Any other, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Another item, action item in Tom's bailiwick, the approval of emergency pesticide treatment of Middletown High School in Twin Towers Athletic Field. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve emergency pesticide treatment of high school in Twin Towers as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? And with any of these, it's all done very environmentally sound. We're required to do that by the state. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. The next item, approval of nomination of John T. Redmond, and motion to approve the nomination of John T. Redmond as Area Nine Director of the New York State School Board Association. And be it resolved that the Board of Education, the enlarged city school district of Middletown, hereby recommends John T. Redmond as Area Nine Director of the New York State School Board Association. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp? Second?
Second.
That was Mr. Pierre. Thank you, Lou. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Delmore presented a, the professional development plan with Mrs. Bowler for backup there. So now I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the professional development plan.
So moved.
Mrs. Blumenau? Mr. Gomez?
I second. So moved. He moved, did I second?
Yeah, I moved it, and Mrs. Bowler, because she said-
Mr. Gomez. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next action item, approval to change, the changes of the superintendent's contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Now we come to the second opportunity to address the board. Same rules apply, four minutes, and we do not dialogue. Any takers on that? Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Any committees reporting this evening? Mr. Sieg.
The audit committee met as a reorganization last week, and the members are myself, Mrs. Blumenau, Mrs. Knapp, Mr. Perino, and Chuck Jones is our community member. And sitting in the meetings will be Mike Tuttle, the Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Shelley Cook, the District Treasurer, and Taryn Clark, the District Clerk. And we're going to meet on Thursdays at 4:30, and that's, you know, that's, can change depending on people's schedules, September 28th, October 26th, January 25th, April 12th, and June 14th.
And I'm sure Mrs. Clark will, as usual, do her most efficient job and send us a reminder of those meeting dates. Any other committees to report this evening? Roundtable? Anything new and compelling by members of our group?
Nothing new and compelling, but the, the, just as a quick notation, my class, class of 1982, is celebrating their 35th class reunion this weekend here in the city of Middletown. So, so I just wanted to make that known, 35 years of Middletown High School. For some reason, they, they called us, and, and I don't know, I'm not saying this is a positive or a negative, you can take it any way you want, they called us the party crew of 82. So it is to say, watch out for the party crew of 82 in the city of Middletown this weekend, because they're, they're coming in, they're coming in in droves starting on tomorrow evening, yeah. So anyhow, I just wanted to make that notation.
And I just have one thing. I'd like to just give a shout out to Chief Bethancourt, who is retiring at the end of Middletown Police Chief. The Middletown Police Department and the Wach Hill Police Department have helped us in so many ways over the years. And I know Chief Bethancourt is a big supporter of the DARE program and the program which superseded that. So the best to, the best to him and retirement, and we all wish him well. Anything else? Okay. I'm sorry, Mrs. B? Go ahead.
One, first wanted to congratulate the, the Middletown Cobra's American Legion Team, Junior Team. They're going to the state championship competition next week. They won districts, so that's, many of our Middletown baseball players are on that team, so congratulations to them. And good job by some of our kids who are on the senior team as well. Unfortunately, they didn't make it to the, to the championship, but they had a great season, and it's a great program that keeps our kids connected to baseball, keeps them in, in shape and focused for their upcoming seasons. And I just wanted to wish congratulations also to our graduating, our graduating class, August group, tomorrow.
Thank you. I had asked Tom if he could give a little rundown of what's happening at the district. Would you like to put that off to the next meeting when? We can, we can do that next meeting because there's a lot of construction. Again, what the administration, what we try to do is to think well ahead and to conduct preventative maintenance on all our buildings and do what's necessary to keep them in excellent shape for the children and the staff of the district.
I think it's also important to thank the parents of the high school, students who come to summer school because the parking lots have been in, they're being torn up and redone so we can have appropriate parking spaces and make them safe for all students with some of the care of the sidewalks as well. So I know it's been a little crazy this week, but thanks to Tom, he scheduled us very tight so we could get this over with in a couple of days, and making sure that that project's done and out of the way. So that should be done by the end of the weekend, right? And we keep moving forward, so.
Good.
I'm sure everybody's going to be happy with that. But we do want to thank the parents for being patient with us over the last week and letting us get through that project.
Thank you, Doc Eastwood, and I want to thank Mrs. Clark for all the help in preparing the agendas and so on, as usual. And I see someone in the back of the room, Mrs. Blumenau?
Some stranger came in. No, my son sat his home for the summer, and so he came to say hello.
That's good.
Going into his junior year at SUNY Brockport.
Congratulations.
I can see that he's a Mets fan.
Do I see a Yankees? And Mr. Delmore, boy, he, he's happy. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
You all said it real fast.
Okay. Got that?
Very good.
Motion meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sieg, any opposed? Vince, you oppose? What's an?